Our reconvene, our meeting for January 8th. Welcome to the school board. I'm not sure if we have to convene or reconvene.
All members are present and Dr. Calverick.
Since we're reconvening, we're gonna, we're gonna hold off an indication of open board comments unless there's something urgent that any of the board members need to express. We'll just jump right into it, if that's all right. Before we start, there was a request to move swap four and six. If there's any discussion on that. If I have any options for that, and if not, get a motion to swap agenda items four and six.
So move this chair.
All of you there?
Aye.
And I have a motion to adjourn. With that, we will, um, we'll start our discussion with this year 2019 budget and Spalding. My first time at one meeting, so if I don't mean to step on any of those or.
Step by the water.
So I apologize if I've done several, we'll be seeing in the future.
Mr. Kelly.
Mr. Forehand, we are prepared to go ahead and begin sharing some information related to our preliminary FY20 data. I have provided, I believe, and please correct me if I'm mistaken, that I have offered everyone a blue folder in which you have some documents which will serve as guiding items for our conversation. Each of our board members is equipped to speak to a wide array of topics this evening associated with the budget. We also have a number of our senior staff members with us and our insurance consultant, David Rowe. And so hopefully, if there are any questions that may arise from our conversation, if the board members or myself is not equipped to respond, we do have some expertise in-house this evening to provide additional insight. And with that being said, I'll turn it over to Chair Spalding to provide some insight on our budget process if that is something that everyone would like to hear about.
The question always comes up every year. How, how do you do your budget? Branch off from different things and so forth and all. So what I've got is a budget process, what we go through, and so forth and all. Now, the first thing we have is the capital improvement plan, capital outlay. Budget priorities, requests from building departments. Fifty-eight budget requests sorted by multiple stakeholders groups into mandatory, critical need and desire. School board, principal, senior staff, faith leaders and support staff. And this year, we had a budget advisory committee. We had folks from out in the community coming in and working with the school people and so forth and all in order to come up with this budget that, that we have. And of course, the governor's budget proposal and template depending on what they're gonna give us down there and all of it. Then we have the review internal, external factors, the ADM compensation, VRS, insurance mandates, revenues, utility increases. Then we have the joint board workshops. Public hearings. And school board, BOS presentations. Do you have any questions on the other thoughts and goals?
We are also tremendous proponents, proponents of education awareness and advocacy. We want for all of our constituents and stakeholders to be knowledgeable about how we are good fiscal stewards of our funds. And so I'll turn it over to Ms. Carson to share some information regarding our efforts with education awareness and advocacy. And this actually is where some of the documents contained within the blue folder will come into play.
Actually, I'm gonna, it's going to be this one and this one, these two. And I'm gonna go ahead and start. A monthly newsletter is sent both electronically and papers throughout the county to parents, teachers, the public are all notified. The school board budget visits, there's a booklet on, on the back. You can see how we have been addressing the budget and the dates that we have planned for that at the top of your back of this little brochure. The budget advisory has met three times, I believe, and we have narrowed down our priorities based on, um, excuse me, based on the mandatory, critical and desired needs of the county. And the requests of the mass majority of the budget were related to personnel, resources, direct supportive instruction, and social, emotional learning and mental health. And the request also included implementation of phase two of the salary, salary compensation completed in FY18. The CCPS legislative priorities, we are going tomorrow to listen to the governor. And our legislative priorities are addressed on the front of this sheet. And on the back of this sheet, the Caroline County Public Schools legislative priorities. So it's on both sides of the sheet. Through PTA board meetings, we are making sure that all of the boards are aware of what our budget needs are based upon and how they are going out. And they are relaying all the information to parents and teachers as well as Dr. Calverick is meeting with all the principals and their staff. So they are all aware, so everybody is on the same page with what's going on. We also have superintendent advisory committee updates where Dr. Calverick has, people meet with her from all of the schools as well as parents, PTA members. And she even has students, she has a student board that she meets with also. And then finally, we will be wearing Red for Ed delegation. And I don't know any more about that, Dr. Calverick, if you wanna touch base on that.
Sure, absolutely. I'm certain that we have all either seen on the news or on social media some of the movements that have been occurring throughout the nation in honor of education and compensation. And Virginia is not unlike many other states and is moving forward with a Red for Ed march and gathering at the Capitol on January 28th. We have had a number of educators express interest. This is actually a full instructional day, and so in order to protect the integrity of teaching and learning, we've identified a small delegation that will go to Richmond and join our fellow localities at the Capitol to support full funding of schools for all federal and state mandates. And so we have our teachers of the year and a new teacher of the year as well as two to three principals and two administrators from central office going to the Red for Ed march. And many of our staff members are engaging and wearing red on Wednesdays to show support of this movement. And so we wanted you to be aware that that is something that some of our staff members are eager to engage in. Additionally, in relation to some of the information that Ms. Carson mentioned, prior to this meeting at two o'clock, we did meet with bus drivers, our maintenance staff, as well as our school nutrition team. We also, at three o'clock, met with the CMS staff and shared the brochure that you have in front of you to give them that initial preliminary view of some of the items that we are thinking of. We assured them that this is a first draft, by no means is this a final product. We understand there are a number of variables that come into play, but we want to ensure that they can be walking, talking testimonials for the goodness that's occurring within our county and advocate as they see fit in a manner that is appropriate for them as a person as well as an educator. So Ms. Harris will share with you information at this point that we have associated with the governor's budget and what that impact may be for the school system.
Right, and we all love this part, the money. The governor's budget, he has proposed $268.7 million in new money for public schools with a 5% salary increase with a local match, local match now. Thirty-five million per student in allocations, thirty-five million for at-risk student programs, eighty million for a one-time low loan interest rate for construction of schools. So that's a one-time loan thing. Three point three million for school campus safety, which includes expansion and training of anything dealing with your buildings. And thirty-six million for your first installment of a three-year phase in of additional funding for school counselors, because they want more counselors in all buildings now.
A couple of additional points to make associated with Ms. Harris's comments. You will find a trend with some of the items that we have in our preliminary priorities. You will see not only alignment with our legislative priorities, which you have in the document closed. Yes, sir, but you will also see alignment with the bud, the budget that the governor has proposed as well as Pathways 2022, our strategic plan. So we come to you being very purposeful and deliberate with our preliminary priorities. We want you to understand that we are looking this year for boots on the ground in the buildings, in the classrooms. I know that's been a question that people have posed in the past, that we are looking for people to bring human resources into our facilities that will make a difference with our students each and every day. And I hope that you find when we discuss our priorities that this year's request absolutely embraces that. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Rollins Fells and Mr. Kelly, who are educators. Yes.
How much is the local match on that 5%?
Great question, and if you don't mind, I would like to ask Ms. Marcia Stevens to address the question.
Certainly. Right now, we're showing $665,000 that we're receiving from the state on net revenues. So the cost for the compensation increase is $965,000 is what it's projected at, so approximately $300,000.
$300,000 additional.
Yes.
And of course, that hinges upon no interference with the general assembly. We all are aware that there's about a $450 to $500 million deficit associated with Medicaid. I think some of us have discussed that previously. While we are hopeful and glass half-full type of people, we also know that reality can come into play and it may be something that we need to revisit. But that $965,000 does equate to an increase for all employees, not select bodies of, of employees.
So there's, there's a difference between the teacher match, which we're required to do based on the governor's funding, and that same percentage you're applying to everybody?
Correct, there is, um, the standard of quality is what is spoken of in the governor's budget. So the raise is applicable to standard of quality positions, yes, sir. Last year, we gave a 0.5% salary increase to administrators, and we very much value the work that they do each and every day to be the guiding light for our division. And so we hope to build them into this year's process as well.
Okay, and, and, um, Mr. Chair, I hope you don't mind, but if, I understood the $300,000 was the local match for standard of quality teachers?
No.
Or that's the, the raise for everybody?
Correct, yes.
What's the, what's the value of just the standard of quality number?
We did not calculate just only standard of quality employees.
We can certainly run that number for you, we just did not do that.
There's a required number for the county.
Correct.
That's not $300,000.
It could be less than that. So if you just do the, the positions that are required to get the 5% and leave out all the people that aren't required, the local match would be less than 300, because.
I, I need to know the local match so we can go to our legislators and say this, you know, thank you for the money, but the local match is $200,000 and we have to do $300,000, so.
We'll get that number for you.
But Marcia, if I'm not mistaken, the, the state only factors in usually social studies, science, English and math.
Correct.
All I care about is what they're saying. We, see, when somebody in Richmond says, "I'm giving you all this money."
Right, it's not, it's never that. When they say 5%, it's for your, it's not anything else, they like to.
I, I wanna be able to go back and say, "Thanks for the $5 million, it really amounts to 25 cents." And that's the reality.
We have no issues pulling that number for you, we'll get that to you. Additionally, it's important to remember that this is a biennium, so it's over two years, and what was allocated for last year's raises also can roll into that 5% as well.
What was allocated for last year's raises?
Ms. Stevens, would you like to address the biennium and how last year's raises impact the cumulative, cumulative total?
Last year, we spent about sixty-five, uh, $665,000 on salary alone. This number includes your related benefits with it also. So the $665 was for the first part of the phase. Between the two, we're getting on an average of 5.07% increase. Um, right now is what is calculated across the board for all positions between the two years, covering the two-year process.
It's complicated.
Yeah, but we've spent that money, so we have to have another six, 600 plus.
Yeah, the raise is calculated at $965,000 fully funded with, fully funded with the benefits included in there is what I'm meaning on that. The state, net state revenue is 665, so there's another $300,000. So it would be the 965 plus what we spent last year.
So it would be 300, the six, 600 plus, plus 300, so we're talking a million local contribution for the raises.
Well, last year, we did receive some state funds. We received $400,000 from the locality last year.
Does the matching fund from the state count towards that study?
I'm sorry, repeat your question.
Do the matching funds, the, the state's proposed teacher increase, does that number count towards the salary study or you want it in addition to the salary study?
Oh, no, that is inclusive of the salary study, good question, thank you for clarifying.
Okay, can I ask another question, Senator Sanders? Is the insurance gonna go up again this year?
That's actually a component that we're going to get to, Mr. Thomas, and we do actually have David Rowe, our consultant here, so you just give us a moment to get to that. We don't know the number, that's, we won't know it until the end of the month, but we do know that there will be an increase and it likely will be a double-digit increase.
All right, just, so we're all clear?
Yeah.
We have another meeting starting at six, okay? I'm okay with going up to 5:59 with this. However, we only got an hour and six minutes to go.
I think it's important for us to discuss the budget.
I completely agree.
Rather than, I mean, we understand your process, but just.
Setting the stage.
I would rather discuss the budget with all due respect than, you know, your plans and things.
Well, at this point, I think we're getting to where the rubber meets the road and we're rolling into the 15 preliminary budget priorities. And I do believe that's where Mr. Thomas was mentioning he'd like to learn a little bit more about. So both Dr. Rollins Fells and Mr. Kelly are prepared to speak to those, and then any questions that you may have in relation to the 15 budget items, we can answer.
Okay, so it sounds like we have some action items to follow up with you all. Um, inside of this brochure, I'll be going over a part of the top 15 priorities. Um, so Mr. Spalding, our chairperson, our chairman has already gone over our process, and this list was sorted and narrowed down. And the only thing that is left are things that we consider to be mandatory or critical, okay? Um, so first item on the list is to fund our year two of the compensation study. Um, we can have follow-up questions as related to that later, but I'd like to make it through the list in just a time. Um, the second positions that we are proposing are two math teachers at Caroline Middle School. Um, that's gonna be very important, especially looking at the new accreditation standards. Um, and we all know that class sizes are impacted by the number of teachers and student ratio. So we feel that that's mandatory and critical. The other position at Caroline Middle School would be two English teachers. Again, due to the accreditation needs, we would like to offer a new teacher in that area. We have, I have a note here that the standard size would be 26 to 21 per class, and so we wanna make sure that we adjust that ratio.
That was the reason that the middle school was not accredited last year. We made it in math for the first time, I think, nine years, but it was reading. And if we give the two extra teachers, that takes class sizes down from 26 to 21.
So class sizes matter. I just wanted to make sure, 'cause I heard otherwise before, so, I mean, it's, it is, and I agree with that 100% that class sizes do matter.
Class sizes always matter.
Whatever study you say, but yes, it's, it's really important for.
Forty persons.
Well, and additionally, I think it's important to not only reference the state accreditation. Yes, we made it in the area of math, we're still working and moving in the right direction for reading, but we also have federal accountability. And CMS is a school that is being monitored for federal accountability for special education in the areas of reading and math. And we believe in collaboration and inclusion model, and so this will also positively impact our ability to serve the special needs population.
I am all on board for getting student teacher issue then. I preached that for years and years and years in the budget, so yes, I, I am 100% agree.
Um, in that same vein, we have requested, and it's a little out of order in your pamphlet, but we're also requesting one help in PE teacher. Um, class average size is being 30-plus students, we need to get that down. Um, that also becomes a, um, an issue when we look at the requirements by the state. Um, and so we need to make sure that the middle school classroom teachers have no more than 150 students or 25 class periods per week. So that's become a compliance issue.
Question?
Yes.
We're adding five instructional teachers to the building. Do you have five in the classroom, Greg?
We would be able to accommodate based on scheduling. So at times, certain classrooms are off for planning period, and therefore you can accommodate that space, yes, sir.
We have, well, we have the physical capacity to.
Yes, 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 sir, thank you.
Good question. We're now gonna move to the elementary level, and you'll see on your list a recommendation for a behavioral specialist at Bowling Green Elementary. Um, I think I'd be preaching to the choir to talk about mental health needs and making sure that we're addressing the social needs of students as well. Um, we put this request in here so that we would have an additional person to develop behavior plans for our tier-two and tier-three students. We are currently implementing PDIS, which is a positive behavior approach. Um, this would also be a, a person that would serve as a liaison between the students and the families and the community. Um, and they would work with the individual students on their needs and helping to implement behavior strategies in the classroom. And again, I'd be preaching to the choir to spend any more time to talk about behavior and classroom management. So we have identified this as a need at Bowling Green Elementary.
If I could simply interject to point out that we, we are large believers and proponents of differentiating our allocation of resources. And I use the analogy of sneakers. If we were all given a pair of sneakers that were the exact same, we've got equality. When you give everyone a pair of sneakers that actually fit your feet, that's equity. And so you'll see, maybe unlike what's happened in the past, we are identifying schools specifically within our priority requests because we don't, we don't want to simply ask for four classroom teachers and, and trust that you as the board of supervisors know what we need to do with them. We're asking for them for specific needs for specific buildings, so differentiating those resources based on what each school's profile requires.
And are they prioritized here at the 15, based on a school leader, just?
There's no prioritization among the 15 of them. These are mandatory and critical needs based on the multiple stakeholder activities that were conducted. Does that answer that question?
Okay, and then I have two more, and then I'll pass it on to Mr. Kelly. Um, in the umbrella, under the umbrella of K5, we have an alternative education teacher and a par education teacher. And those directly align with the mental health, health and safety, wellness, student achievement and effective management, as well as staff and student relationships. Um, we are looking to provide tiered and differentiated support in the areas of attendance, addressing chronic absenteeism, providing interventions. And all of this is grounded in our discipline data and the elementary intervention and alternative education program needs, specifically to provide social and emotional learning. The goal here is to make sure that, um, we have an alternative to suspension with students at that grade level. Um, and this, uh, proposed item aligns with the legislative priorities. So at this time, I'll pass it to Mr. Kelly to continue the list.
Uh, tag team. Back on, uh, if you looked at the ITRT specialist, right now, we have four for our five schools. Uh, we have one splits between Bowling Green and Madison. And, um, what we'd hope is to have one ITRT in each building full-time working with the staff, which integrate technology into the classroom. Um, student support specialist, go ahead.
I'm so sorry to interject, but I do think it's important to discuss this a bit more. Uh, we need a fifth ITRT for multiple reasons. One, we have a number of STEM grants, and to fully implement those, we need a staff member in each building. If you've ever had the opportunity to visit Madison Elementary and see their STEM lab in action, every elementary school deserves a full-time ITRT that can bring and breathe life into STEM the way Madison has been able to do. Secondly, we now are under a mandate by the state in 2019, 2020, we also are required to teach computer science standards. Bless our classroom teachers' hearts, they are jacks of all trade and master of many, but not all of them are fully equipped to teach computer science standards. So each building really needs an IT specialist that can assist them in integrating computer science standards in a natural, meaningful, relevant way. And that is why we are really requesting that ITRT as well.
Twenty-first century skills. Um, also a student support specialist, which helps with chronic absenteeism, which is a problem not just here, but pretty much everywhere statewide. But in addition, they'll also provide community support, family engagement, mentorship programs, more of the positive behavior stuff that Joanna mentioned. Um, the school improvement specialist is, uh, for, for, there's a lot of things that go into that, but the way the governor is wording things and the things that we're getting from the State Department of Ed is that guidance counselors are not testing coordinators. Um, they have to spend 80% of their time face-to-face with the students, which means the staff, which has primarily been used to implement testing at the high school, which is counseling and APs, assistant principals. We can't do that anymore, so we really have to hire someone to do that, but also do a bunch of other things that are needed at the high school as well, but.
We do not know, sir, it's currently our director of school counseling as well as an assistant principal. And when you think about our high school, we're a four-by-four, that means we're running full-body SL testing in the fall, in the spring, as well as the summer.
Do you have one of the lower levels though? Do you have a testing specialist at the lower ones?
We do not have a testing specialist anywhere other than, we do have a, we do have a, um, school improvement specialist, the middle school, it was added last year. And she is overseeing testing. And so that has been a tremendous asset because she's also their data analyst as well as their intervention remediation coordinator. But there are no testing coordinators other than at central office, Ms. Beth Housler serves as the division D doc.
We've been like piecemeal-ing at the high school forever, but now the governor's coming out, so it's not like, uh, this one you're gonna have to have, this is the governor saying, here's what your job is, here's what you're going to do. So that testing responsibility does not disappear, it's still there.
And going along, going along with that, an AP is a testing coordinator out there, which means that they're gonna be doing all of the time at that particular day on testing, and that throws double duty on the other APs, especially if something happens and so forth. We just need.
Yeah, discipline doesn't disappear just because the kids are testing. I mean, they still gotta do their jobs and everything else, and whoever's in charge of building maintenance, if they're gonna do testing and the heating unit's not working, well, what are you gonna do? Something's gotta get.
Did you say this, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Um, did you say this was required by the, it's like a governor's requirement?
So I wanna be clear about that. The governor is not saying that we are required to hire a testing coordinator. What the governor is saying is that it is no longer appropriate for school counselors to be overseeing testing. It is very typical for a high school not to have a testing coordinator. I think we'd be hard-pressed across the state of Virginia to identify many of the counties without that.
Well, the, I mean, the number of SLs is going, you know, obviously, we are shrinking on the number of SLs we're giving to, I mean, so, I don't know.
But we also need someone to oversee performance-based assessments, all of our credentialing and certification for CTE, so it is a full-body, full-time position, yes, sir.
Ms. Mary, can you provide a discipline of data for terms of.
Sure.
Interactions and suspension.
Sure, for each of the buildings?
Yes.
We can do that, absolutely.
Break down by demographic and.
We have that readily accessible, are you finding that as a, um, a set of data that's going to be insightful in relation to some of the social, emotional position requests?
Can I go on? All right, no, it's fine. Um, so school improvement specialist, uh, next was the Virginia preschool initiative curriculum. Uh, the VPI has changed, I am off the top of my head, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we've been using the same curriculum since 2006, which has been changed by the state. And we now have to move on to an evidence-based curriculum, which is gonna cost about $10,000. Again, that's the state saying this is what we do, and it is best practice. Um, well, web content filtering, uh, there are federal laws which dictate what students can and cannot see. Um, and so we need to update the filtering system that we use throughout the county at all of our schools. Um, also network server software, subscriptions need to be updated, Microsoft Windows and Office subscriptions need to be updated. And then the last one is roofing repairs, it does not fall under capital improvement, but these were items that, the roofs don't need to be replaced, but maintenance needs to be done on some of the roofs in order to keep them functioning, because I don't think any of us wanna go back to a situation where we saw the high school prior to the multimillion-dollar renovation. Um, it'd be a lot easier for us to take this and Bowling Green, Madison and the school board office to just do some maintenance repairs on that.
It's on the older part of the building, it's not the renovated part.
It's just like tar and repair, not.
Well, Mr. Honen is here and could certainly provide insights, but these are fifty-year roofs, and the roof itself is structurally sound on each of the three buildings. Within the roofing system.
Your revenue, if it's fifty years old.
They are not yet met their fifty-year mark. However, within the roof are parts and pieces that need to be maintained in order to get the longevity that is expected, and so that is really what we're requesting funding for, is for those small pieces that must be maintained to get the fifty-year lifespan taken care of, so that we can.
I know, I guess we'll share that with you. The conversation I was having was can we do that, which means the Board of Supervisors do that, kind of like we did with the gym floor. There was a lot of discussion about it, it kind of fell under, you know, whatever. So if the county does it, it's for the benefit of everybody, because then you don't have to worry about that being in your budget, and we have a feeling of maybe we're taking care of the maintenance and if we won't, we can pause more down.
We certainly would not be opposed to that conversation by any means. We were assuming with our introduction to the capital outlay idea that Mr. Colley and Mr. Vincent and Mr. Parton shared with us that this would potentially be an item that would qualify for capital outlay, but that is certainly a much more appealing idea than what we were entertaining.
We're only talking forty-seven thousand, but it was, we would, the answer was we would discuss it, but that's.
Absolutely.
One of the cyclical maintenance issues that we need to address and be more proactive about to prevent the long-term large problems.
The last component we would like to share with you is other factors. This will cover the insurance component that was asked about, and it'll also provide just insight into ADM, which we're all familiar with from the demographics study, but it'll just briefly touch on VRS as well as health insurance, and David Rose is here at our disposal, and if we do have questions, now would be the time to present those to him.
How much?
How much?
That's a question.
As of right now, I'm projecting a nine, my underwriter is projecting a nineteen-point-one percent increase.
Oh, you might have to get right down.
What's that?
We just got.
Bear with me, just, bear with me, let's do some perspective here. Since we moved into this program, we've basically been flat, decreases, small decreases, small increases. Last year I was projecting a twenty-nine percent increase. We secured one-point-three million dollars out of reserves from the state. We're in the Commonwealth of Virginia's program, called Local Choice, brought our increase down to thirteen-point-one percent. I'm projecting a nineteen-point-one percent increase. That's just the math, that's the math of the, of the projection.
Tell me how much it hurts.
It's probably going to be, as Dr. Kelberic said, it's still going to be a double-digit increase.
No, no, see, nineteen percent, forty-two percent, that doesn't hurt me yet. Dollars and cents, how much does it hurt?
Let's talk about this. At a nineteen-point-one percent increase, that's a one-point-three million dollar increase. Now that's all in, that's employer plus employee share. Marcia, do you have a video off the top of your head of the split between what, what we fund versus what the employees fund?
I didn't hear your response.
Would it be an eighty-twenty on average?
Eighty percent would be the.
With the employer?
Eighty percent would be ours, twenty percent would be employee's.
Mr. Colley, how much did, excuse me, how should we put in reserve, keep in reserve loss share for, for the, for the insurance? We kept some insurance money off to the side.
My three hundred?
Is that?
I thought it was three hundred.
It was, it was almost one hundred, three eighty or something like that.
Where we, yeah, we decided that we would, we were told there wouldn't be, you know, back-to-back and double-increasing insurances, but we're not probably going to likely, and now we're talking thirteen and nineteen, all right?
Okay, I don't really care about.
No, no, I understand, I understand, but it was a smart move then.
Thanks, I appreciate that. Before you go.
Yes, sir.
One-point-three is this year's projected increase.
Yes, sir. Employer plus employee share.
Yeah, just dollars. What was last year's increase?
In terms of dollars?
Dollars, was it nine hundred thousand or something like that?
Well, I don't remember off the top of my head what the dollar amount increase was, but I know we secured one-point-three million dollars in reserves from the state to bring it down to thirteen-point-one percent. It was prob, I don't want to say off the top of my head.
And I do think that we're in demand, if we could just allow David to address, he has not yet received word from the underwriter regarding the amount of reserves funding that we potentially will be able to gain access to. Last year we were very successful in reducing from twenty-nine down to thirteen. We're hopeful that we'll go from nineteen to a lower double-digit, but we don't know that, so while we do have that hard and fast number you just pressed for, we know that the outcome will be more favorable, we just don't know how favorable, so we have to look at it in terms of degrees.
And let me share my.
Please.
I mean, aside from being a geek for numbers, I, I want to make sure that, that we give the teachers raises.
Yes, sir.
I felt really bad last year because we thought we gave the teacher raises, teachers, but the insurance was so high, in some cases it was a net loss, and, and I didn't like that at all, not that it's anybody's fault here, but we're saying now the same thing is going to happen, and if I just have to fund one-point-three, because last year you didn't fund the employee part of the, of the, you know, insurance, right? So all, all of the insurance costs went on the employees. We funded the employer part, which was the school. So now if we fund the employer part again, we give a five percent raise, they could have a net loss again, which I'm going to tell you is really not acceptable.
We hear what you're saying, and, and we feel very similar to how you've just expressed that. One of the things I heard Nancy share is that we need to look at changing local choice, and I do think it's important while David is here to address that, because that is something we hear frequently, and I think it's important to have perspective associated with that option.
Sure. So really we have two options. My understanding is you all are standalone self-funded with Anthem.
Correct.
The county.
The county is, correct. We were as well, on, on the school side. Your claims are your claims, right? Your claims are your claims. Let's, let's just, let's, let's be candid about that. We are partnered with Anthem, you all are partnered with Anthem, as I explained to the school board, have explained to the school board several times, Anthem is the largest payer of healthcare costs in the state. Anthem has the best discounts with the doctors and the hospitals in the state. Our claims cost less when we're partnered with Anthem than if, if we were with Signet, Aetna United, Centerra, whoever else. Where we do better by being part of the state's contract, we do that in a couple of ways. Commonwealth of Virginia buys this health insurance, they're the largest buyer of health insurance in the state, they buy for a hundred and forty thousand employees. We were buying standalone for five hundred employees, and you all probably have two to three hundred on your plan, would be my guess, somewhere in that, in that neighborhood, we pay.
What with the jail now?
So the jail is now part of the county contract?
Correct.
Yeah. We had, after, after we terminated our contract directly with Anthem, we had about one-point-six million dollars in reserves, somewhere around that number, if I remember correctly.
Right.
And we held back, what, about four hundred thousand dollars to use for this year, so that's why we're with the state, we feel like that's the, you know, that, that's the place we get the most bang for our buck in terms of healthcare dollars. The claims are the claims, we've had two really tough years, our experience is getting better, and this stuff is cyclical. Again, when we joined Local Choice in two thousand and fifteen, rates went down, we were able for the employees to pay, to pay less. First year we had a two and change percent increase, next year we had a decrease. Last, last year was the first year that we had really an increase in our healthcare costs, and it's going to happen again this year.
What were your numbers from?
First of February. This is my underwriter's projection, I've called Anthem in the state, you all are the first one of my hundred-plus groups to get the projection for, for October one.
So did we look at another option? Because that was, that was a pain point last year when we expected an increase, we said, okay, you guys need to look for another option.
Yeah, let, let's talk through that, so if we.
Well, is this a yes or no question?
We did not look last year, and I'm.
Did you look this year?
No, and I'm going to tell you why we're.
No, no, it's just a yes or no question, that's fine.
No. If Anthem's the lowest-cost payer, and our fixed costs are the smallest they can be with the state.
It was just a yes or no?
Yeah. Certainly we, something we can do, but we did not, for those reasons.
I have a quick question, if, if after two years of real big claims increases, what would happen if we did go out and look, what would other people be likely to say?
They're, they're going to, well.
They're going to look at the claims. Our experience rate is what it is, and it affects, it affects our.
And the only other place we could go for a proposal would be to whom? To Anthem, we've already been, and we were able to do better than that through the state.
Could we do better if we joined with the county?
With the Commonwealth of Virginia, it does not matter whether you're a group of two or two thousand, you pay the same fixed cost. Our fixed cost, county today with Anthem pays fixed cost based on their two hundred or three hundred, however many folks are on their plan. Our numbers would make our fixed costs go down if we join with them, but our claims would also follow us. Probably the county would not be interested in that.
The county's.
Is that correct, Mr. Colley?
If we had a lower experience rate, they would probably.
They may want to join with us.
And Dana, can you give perspective across the nation as to what healthcare is experiencing collectively?
It's coming up, but that's what we said last year when we were talking about.
You're right, and I am not, I am not denying your argument from last year, it has played out to be accurate, and so we are sitting here very grateful to have those funds at our disposal, so we'll publicly make that statement.
Well, I appreciate that, but four hundred thousand doesn't really put a dent in one-point-three million.
Again, that's, that's true math, but what the math looks like, we're not anticipating a nineteen percent increase.
Okay.
For, if we're funding twenty percent, if the employees are funding twenty percent of one-point-three million, that's two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars, four hundred thousand more than sufficiently would help offset that some, just paying their part, it would shift the percentage.
My point is, I don't want the employees to pay their twenty percent increase. If I, if the employees pay the twenty percent increase, they're not getting a raise, they're going back there, and I'm not going to let that happen again.
We also are going to evaluate our offerings, we're looking at wellness, so that we can begin to be better stewards of our own health.
Of our resources.
And so there are some other avenues that we're investigating that we haven't talked into in the past, and hopefully that.
I hear you, I'm on your side.
Hopefully that will be advantageous.
Perhaps change the percentage that they're paying, and from our side, make it a ninety-ten, and, you know, if, if that is sort of a stabilization, you know, an equalization as you do, you know, income, property taxes, you just change the rate and to equalize it, so when property values go up, do an equalization, so the net that you pay is no change, am I right?
And.
If it's skills for jobs.
No, we're not arguing, but that's, that's.
But we too, we too are aspiring to not have employees take home less than they are currently taking home.
Whichever of you want.
The insurance.
Which everyone wants.
Oh, I thought you said whatever.
Everybody, everyone wants.
No-brainer.
That really concludes what we had hoped to share, and if you do have other questions, we're happy to call upon any of our folks to answer those questions.
Mr. Chairman, could I just check my last, make sure I'm right? He said one-point-three million is the increase now in insurance. Could be expected to go down.
We'll have firm numbers in a week and a half.
And the priorities here are one million fifty-nine thousand, I added them up, I don't know if that's right, so we're talking almost two-point-four million in additional funds for next year.
They're talking about VRS.
There's.
None.
That's the good news.
Also, group life remains the same as well.
So is that, is that close to right? Two-point-four is like the worst case?
That would be a worst-case scenario, yes sir.
So it's one million plus whatever the insurance costs are?
Yes, sir.
And that's three hundred thousand for the salary study, the first.
Are we ready to move on to item number five?
Thank you.
We will, we will get more firm numbers when we, we will provide.
Absolutely, we'll make sure, I have two takeaways, just to make sure, we're going to get discipline data disaggregated based on ethnicity, we're also going to look at providing the local match per SOQ, the dollar map associated with that. Was there anything else that you had hoped you would bring to the table that I have left off? So we'll make sure we get back with you within the next week.
Capital, I haven't seen.
Capital improvement?
Yes.
That was submitted, that is actually already turned in, yes sir.
Is the gym for this building one of that?
No.
Not to my recollection, without looking at the capital improvement, no.
I'm sharing, it might be in that five-year part, but it's not.
All right, without further ado, move on to number five, proposed amendment number three to fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, school level. Who would like to start on?
We'll actually call forward Marcia Stevens. And you'll have to repeat what you said, because I was.
Oh, just say, your budget amendment.
Thursday night at our last board meeting, we had two grants approved by the state, so I went before them asking for approval of a budget amendment for these two grants. We received a hundred percent of the two thousand and eighteen school and safety security grant. In addition, they reallocated their two hundred and seventeen thou, two hundred and seventeen school and safety grant, they have awarded Caroline, it's thirty-five thousand nine-hundred-and-sixty dollars. In addition, we received a vision screening grant, it's in order to assist us in doing our vision screenings. This year they require the kindergarten, grade two, four, three, grade seven, and ten all have a comprehensive vision screening in the program, and they gave us eight thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars for the vision screening in order to assist us for those. So we were asking for a budget amendment for, to bring in these two grants of state-awarded money. Any questions?
I was just curious what projects you were going to allocate the safety stuff to, because there's a, a list of them, I guess it's your letter, it doesn't really, I mean, it just lists a bunch, schools and no specific projects.
Yes. So it goes back to the original two thousand and seventeen application for those, there's cameras, there's panic systems, and radios, and it was three schools that were awarded, Madison, the high school, and Bowling Green.
So we didn't do any of those during the renovations at the high school or at Madison?
The panic, we don't have panic systems, it just stepped down. I do not believe there's panic systems in any of our schools, right Caroline? There were some radios purchased prior, prior on our school and security grants, this is for additional ones, and the cameras, we bought cameras last year, these are additional cameras.
Number, number, I'm not an accountant, but if your report to us, it lists a debit and credit for each of those, isn't this extra money?
It's revenues and expenditures, you gotta have both, so a debit and credit.
But this is, this is a grant that you're getting additional revenue, right?
Correct, so I have to be able to bring the revenues in as well as expenditures by.
Again, I'm not an accountant, but shouldn't there be an additional thirty-five thousand dollars in your budget?
There is, because you're bringing an additional thirty-five thousand dollars in revenue for us to be able to expend thirty-five thousand dollars in expenses, okay? And then the vision grant is eighty-nine hundred, the same way. So we will book, these are the budget entries, we will book the receiving, the revenues receiving in, and we will also book the expenditures.
Yes. Okay. I know it's both crazy, I didn't know it was totally crazy.
That is number, agenda file.
Some, some are coming, they're likely to have.
Okay, any other discussion with that before we move on?
All right, discussion on future use and ownership of former liaison of elementary.
Right, many of you were present when the demographics report was made to the board at the last meeting, so I think that we've got some, the expenditures that need to be made on that board currently with the HBAC system, we thought it was time to at least talk about with the future plans for that. We thought it was time to at least talk about with the future plans for that building, because it's, I think the board, y'all jump in here, are, have a hard time continuing to spend capital dollars making investments to that building, which would be an unknown as to what the overall use of that building is.
And I believe I'll speak on behalf of the school board, but please interject along the way, should you feel so inclined. Of course, we can appreciate and understand the desire to take ownership over the facility and understand how the demographic study relates. And so, what we did to be extremely knowledgeable associated with this topic is we took the demographic study and we really broke that down in two different facets. And I want to share with you exactly why we did that. A demographic study, or at least the one that we've conducted, looks solely at average daily membership. It does not look at your ability to programmatically grow. And so, I thought it was important for us to look at our ability to embrace growth over time. So, I want to share with you kind of the outcome of those two lenses, and hopefully that will help you understand the, the outcome of the school board's discussion. Um, the first is, I think it's important to know that ADM has dropped approximately 9,600 students across the state. This is not a Caroline County only issue. Actually, and I do have a document I'll pass around to you. Um, not only is it a statewide issue, but when I did an analysis with Marcia Stevens associated with regional ADM, you will see that out of our 16 regional partners, of which 15 are represented on this top graph, over 50% received a reduction in ADM for this past school year. So, just to put into context, I think it's important to have that lens.
This is in public schools?
Correct, just public schools, yes, sir. Just our region, region three. So, you can see in the left-hand column who that's including. It's a wide array of localities stemming from large localities like Spotsy and Stafford to very small localities like Matthews and Middlesex and Northumberland. Um, so, that's available there for you to see. Additionally, it's important to note that even within the demographic study, that the 2010 census, which was used, has 3.14 persons equating to a family. So, we have a number of factual variables that are coming into play with ADM that I thought was important to point out based on the study and based on other data that we've collected. Now, having said that, where does the, where, where does the crux of the issue come in? It comes in with programmatic growth. So, when you are looking at the bottom of the document I just sent around and you are looking at enrollment, it states in the study, over 10 years, all variables remaining study, meaning that none of the opportunity for change to this data occurs. You are looking at 137 student increase at the elementary, 133 student, or decrease, excuse me, at the middle, and 128 student decrease at the high. So, in order to think about that in terms of programmatic growth and space availability, I divided all of that out. So, everyone, if you'll follow me in the decline in enrollment column, when you look at 137 students declining over 10 years' time, so by '28, '29, and you divide that by three elementary schools, and then by six grade levels, that equates to about 45.7 students per building, or 7.6 students per grade. What that means is, we gain zero classrooms, even though we're losing 137 students. So, that leaves us no capacity for programmatic growth at the elementary level. I did the exact same process at the middle and the high, which of course is less complex because we only have one facility at each of those levels. Um, but I did divide it by the grade levels. At the middle school, we would gain 1.5 classroom per grade, and at the high school, we'd gain one classroom per grade. So, we have a little bit more flexibility with programmatic growth. But as you saw in our budget request, we are looking at alternative education for elementary. That's just one example of programmatic growth that we would need space for. So, I, I leave you with that to kind of ponder, and then I segue into the second part, and I'll pass this sheet around. This is in relation to.
How's your best point start?
Oh, sure.
Excuse me, but I was too.
Yeah.
You're looking at alternative ed for elementary schools, right?
We are, and all ed looks very different at secondary than elementary. It could be a two-week program where students are immersed in both academics as well as social-emotional learning, where they hit the reset button, you develop an instrumental, individualized plan, and you get them the tools and the assets, the resources they need, and then they are immersed back into the general ed classroom. Um, and so, we are looking at regionally. We've been having discussions with some of our local partners about alternative education. I don't know if you're aware, but there's a new state mandate that prohibits all schools in the state of Virginia from suspending students in kindergarten through third grade. And we believe wholeheartedly in that pedagogically, it is absolutely what is right. But on a day-to-day basis, we have students who are displaying behaviors which are safety issues to not only themselves but others. And we need an opportunity to be able to give them restorative strategies. Kindergarten. We've, we've actually had multiple children hospitalized. We've had children suspended for egregious behaviors. So, children are coming to school with tremendous trauma on a greater level than ever before. Um, so, thank you for the question. But coming back to the document I just sent around, we did a square footage analysis. Um, again, you can see some of the calculations. We did share with you on the back, the prototype that is available through the VDOE, which helped us calculate square footage. At the bottom of the, the actual chart, you'll see the VDOE recommendation for square footage, the VDOE state average over the last three years for square footage, as well as where we stand. So, I really want us to look again at the elementary world, because that's really where we are hurting for space availability. So, at Bowling Green, our current square footage is about 117 per student. The state recommendation's 97. The state average over the last three years is 119.
Where are you looking at?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm really honing in on the air, the three columns that have the red. At Madison, our square footage is about 94 square feet per student with the recommendation of 107, and with the state average over the last three years being 119. That, at Lewis and Clark, we're at 102 with the recommendation from the VUE being 97 and the state average being 119. So, when you look at not only this document, but also you partner it with what I shared with you regarding the, the loss over 10 years with all things remaining study as outlined in the, the, um, the demographic study, we are really in a place where we are not able to provide you with access or ownership to that building. We have a number of things programmatically that are being discussed. Um, some of those are contractual agreement with Challenge U. Challenge U is a company that we will work with in the near future for students who are dropout students, who have a small number of credits that they need to regain. And so, this could be a job training center and a registration site for Challenge U. We also are talking regionally. This is an infancy stage, but also even just within Caroline about the need for the elementary social-emotional programs and being able to service the whole county with those resources. Um, there is discussion on year-round training facility for folk-style freestyle wrestling and competitive cheerleading. And then, in terms of regional discussions, there have also been conversations regarding an autism program, as well as some regional career and technical programming that's not offered at the high school, but local regions are interested in entertaining. So, at this point in time, we don't feel it would be appropriate for the school board to identify the property as a surplus property, which then would afford you the opportunity to gain access to the deed or have that property sold to you. Um, we've got to be able to protect that asset for programmatic.
Do you guys plan on doing a major upgrade then?
That is a good question, and I will yield to the school board.
Well, if that, Mr. Black was sort of hearing my question, that's fine. I, I understand that.
Sure.
I also understand that if you are a landlord, if you own a property, you need to maintain it.
Sure.
And I don't expect you could have put autism children or any child or any working in the building, blow and mold out of the surface.
Sure.
So, I guess what we need to know is, if we're gonna have activities there, is there a plan in your cap, along the crew, to maintain that building? Because I don't want anybody getting separated in there, so.
And the follow-on to that is, you know, there were break-ins, and we weren't allowed to have the sheriff's office follow up on that because we didn't own the building. I guess my question is, did you all follow up on the break-ins and do anything with the individuals that actually broke into the building?
Mr. Stevens, I would need to get back with you on that because I don't have extensive information regarding that comment. So, I would want to be certain that I was adequate in my response to you. Um, so, that's certainly something I can get back with you on. But I will share with you that, you know, in terms of current usage, the, the sheriff's office does use our facility in Lady Smith Elementary. They're, they're there regularly, and that is someone that.
They can't, they can't charge somebody back.
I mean, my fault, Mr. Thomas, isn't it what they told us? They couldn't, they couldn't do anything because the school board.
Say it out loud, right?
Wouldn't, wouldn't enable them to do the investigation. Then there were things that were damaged in there, nothing was. I mean, that was the sheriff's office at our meeting telling us about the break-in, and we were utterly flabbergasted that nobody was, nothing was done because the school board was responsible for the property and they didn't, they weren't willing to correct.
Is there a way?
I don't, I don't think that.
We reported this.
No.
This is the first.
They told us, they told us.
That's what happened.
They told us the.
I will share with you that this is the first that I'm hearing of it. So, you can afford us the opportunity to investigate.
Is there a way, I think, to, to, to take care of what the sheriff said? Is there a way that you could list us at least as a tenant on, on the lease you have?
Sure.
So, we could at least be able to call the sheriff's office and report problems?
Mr. Thomas, we're gonna, we have a question. Uh, we have an MOU that is signed, and in my mind, it should be equivalent to a lease, but we're concerned with that, whether there is equivalency there to give us standing.
Well, that's, yeah, I mean, it may be, it may be a discussion between us, the school board, and the sheriff's office.
Correct.
Especially since the sheriff's office is in the building.
Yeah, they're in the building.
They should be able to investigate something that threatens their, their office.
Listen, none of us are disagreeing with your request in terms of ability to communicate. Let us just gain some clarity and some insight. The fact that there are seven of us sitting around the table and none of us have knowledge definitely indicates that there's a communication breakdown, and we need to certainly investigate that. And we'll get back with you. You know, if, if the ability to empower you to make that call and conduct the investigation is there, I don't know that any of us would have an issue with that. But please afford us the chance to discuss it.
And Paul, you probably also need to know that people going, children going in, young people going in there, can you to have them, like, seat the five ways, give it to the doors?
And they pull on them, and they're, and then they're playing.
Okay.
We've actually had basketball, 2:00 in the morning, when the sheriff's officer shows up, and they all run out the back. I mean, this isn't a single event.
Sure.
Well.
And we certainly ask that you communicate with us as well.
Well, I've done that before myself.
Yeah, that's like 2:00 AM.
So, so far, I've heard two things. If I could just make sure we're on the same page. You would like to know what our CIP process is, or what our plans are to continue to update and maintain the building? So that if you choose to continue to use the facility, then you have an understanding of, of our efforts fiscally in that.
We don't know this, but the same problem that we're experiencing, you are likely going to be experiencing if you haven't already, is your current tenants.
Sure.
So, there.
Sure.
There is substantial work that needs to be done to the entire building.
Right.
To its perimeter access, to HVAC, to just, to bathrooms are still, you know, elementary tools to make it functional for.
Adults.
And then we're, we've already put about $100,000 into the, into the building. Just probably, that's probably the low side. And we're not sure that, you know, speaking for myself at this point, having three facilities from a mile of each other in a county as large as we are, not necessarily as intuitive as we might think.
Sure. I think one thing, and I will share, being new in this position, um, I think one of the things that would be beneficial to me personally, may, may be less important to others, would be maybe for Mr. Honan and I to schedule a time for one of you or a couple of you to join us at the building, since you are frequent users of the facility, to share your thoughts with us. And then, we can take that back and talk as a school board about what our potential plans are and come back with you and share an update in the near future. Um, but I think it's important for those of you that have that vested interest in the, in the facility to share with us what you really see as priorities. And we want to hear you and consider all of those factors and see what we can do, because we do agree that having your, your actual programs run out of that building is a win for, for our kids and for the county as a whole, so.
And I think we should have a couple, we have some staff members that you could have a more knowledgeable than we all are.
So, Mr. Honan and I will reach out to Mr. Forehand and maybe Ms. Hall, and we can get something on the books, and you can identify whoever you feel is best to meet us there.
Mr. Colley or Pam?
Okay. Sure.
Well, we, we agree with you. We're gonna hold, hold that building, it's our responsibility to keep up these things that are, that are happening. Simple as that.
And we call people to support about his security.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. We'll, we'll definitely investigate.
If it was a lengthy, well, we had a, a good discussion at a board meeting in September or October when we were made aware.
No, it was, it was later, it was sooner than this, since like December. It was, yeah.
Please, no, we invite you to pick up. I, I've given everyone I've had an opportunity to meet with my cellphone number. Please call one of us and let us know if that happens. I will do the same in return to be aware.
At least I was.
They don't build.
Yeah, no idea, sir.
They have their own electronic setup to get.
Not, not in December.
No, because when this issue went on, he actually came to the meeting with us and looked.
Because I've already met with him.
And so, first.
Okay, thank you.
Clay, if I can ask, who, let you guys know, like, what was the, like.
Joe, you can answer that better.
Who found out that the building got broken into, first of all?
Uh, Parks and Rec staff did when they entered the building and found that somebody had ransacked everything in the building, anything, had anything in it. It was thrown around, our cameras spotted everything. We identified they came through the gymnasium, um, which is, that's where the real problem is, is we don't, in our MOU, that is not our space. We do not have control over the gymnasium. So, because we don't have a lease, nor do we own it, we could not, we weren't the ones that could call law enforcement to say there was an issue because it wasn't our space.
Is that the, is that the sheriff's department?
No. If you walk in the building, everything going in the front of the building to the right, with the exception of the gym, is under the MOU that the county has, and going down to the left, right, first hallway. So, that's under, if somebody broke into that area, we have control, we've got a lease that says that's our space. But somebody broke in, they ransacked all that, we started going back looking at videos and found out. So, we called sheriff's office, said, hey, we've got this issue. They said the school would have to, to, you know, state there was an issue. Um, we called Mr. Honan, let him know. We went back with Dr. Hillman and Mr. Honan at the facility. We walked up and down, found out. Ended up having a watch. Mr. Honan has put signs up now, so he's talked several times with the sheriff's office. We now have signage up there because they actually called the sheriff's office after we had an issue. We called and said, hey, we've got an issue. They started doing a watch where the sheriff's office would just show up, finding people there. There. So, those are things that were part of being ordered and being worked on, trying to prevent that. Because once they're in the gym, they can walk in and out of the rest of the building.
Can we cut that part out?
I have a model here.
Well, I do appreciate that additional detail. And clearly, as the transition of superintendent to superintendent has occurred, the, the communication regarding this scenario has not happened. But now, we're fully informed in terms of its occurrence, and we will absolutely do our due diligence, and we want to partner with you on that facility to make it the best for the community we can. So, um, we will, we will make sure that we talk at the sheriff's department, that we put a plan together after touring with you.
Any other discussion on item number four? Um, item number seven, any open items? Now, open up to the school board first. You have the items.
Thank you for listening to us. We appreciate that very much, thank you.
Now, how about, for six thousand, any items?
One question back on the subject, just to make sure we understand. Of the 1 million on this issue, how much of that could be covered by state fund?
Well, it'll depend upon the general assembly and of course, the outcomes of many of the legislative priorities, and whether or not they choose to fully fund some that will come out as mandates. And I will yield to Marcia for any additional insight with Mr. Thomas's question.
Right now, in the template, we're showing a net of $665,000 of state funds. We put it right now on the compensation. So, that's the net template that we're getting from the state at this time, all funding sources together.
Wait, you said that's on the top?
On the 300, on the 900,000 compensation.
Yeah, yeah, well.
Okay, and we're still in budget development, we still have health insurance numbers coming in. Dr. Calbert will present her budget in February.
Anybody else in the board who wants to have a comment, item, issue, question?
Thank you all, and, and thanks ever finally figured out how to use handles to make the, the semicircle, the square works well.
Yes, roughly, you said on the end. All right, with that, um, any opposing comments? This is actually from our January eighth meeting that we choose to offer up now versus.
January, can I still talk about Verizon, and how they stiffed us on the tower? Oh, it's been dead, but I'd like to be the judge saying.
Move for government. All eyes in favor of adjourned this second?
I don't think so.